I'd like to call to order the December 5th, 2017, meeting of the Iowa City City Council. Roll call.
Bachway.
Here.
Cole.
Here.
Dickens.
Here.
Mims.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Throgmorton.
Here. So, Councilmember Pauline Taylor cannot be with us tonight. She's attending an important event in New Orleans. And we'll come back with news for us, I don't know, next time we get together. Okay, item two, Student Leadership Awards. Would our two students come up, please?
Come right—
All the way up here.
Yeah, you can call that here.
He'll stand in between you.
And then you can turn around. There you go.
He's got to get his microphone. Let me stand in between you. Well, I don't know. We'll find out who's supposed to go first. So, I think, you know, I haven't figured out how to hold these three things and the microphone all at the same time. Is this working? Yeah. All right, so we're going to start with you, Ben. Okay, so Ben Moreley. So, would you read your statement, Ben? I'll hold this microphone for you.
Hi, I am Ben Moreley. Thank you for choosing me to receive this award. I think I was chosen for this award because I treat all kids with how I would want to be treated, which is with kindness and respect, even though I may not hang out with them. I think you need to treat all adults with respect no matter what. I also think I am polite and use my manners always. I care about kids and want to make sure they do not feel any pain, like some other people may feel when they break an arm or have a death in their family. I try to be a leader, especially at Safety Patrol, so none of the kids get hurt. Thank you very much for listening.
All right, thank you. Well done. Thank you, Ben. All right. And next is Peush Pidi-Pali—
Pidi-Pali.
—Pai-Pali. Let me hold this for you. You can read your statement.
My name is Peush Krishna Pidi-Pali. I thank my teachers for selecting me for this award and my parents for their support. I help the Horn community by participating in Safety Patrol and help my buddies learn many things. Being good citizen to me means helping others and doing my duties. Boy Scouts influenced me to do community service, and as I progressed to Eagle, I hope to help the community in many ways. Thank you.
Very good. Okay, so, both of you are receiving Student Leadership Awards. They say exactly the same thing, except your name appears on the award. Okay? So, that part's different. So, it says, "Student Leadership Award. For your outstanding qualities of leadership within Ernest Horn Elementary as well as the community, and for your sense of responsibility and helpfulness to others, we recognize Peush and Ben as an outstanding student leader. Your community is proud of you," or "Your community is proud of you!" exclamation point. Presented by the Iowa City City Council, December 2017." So, Peush, this is yours. And Ben, let me make sure I hand you the right one. This one is yours, Ben. So, "I know the proud parents are out there because I met them earlier tonight. Congratulations to you for bringing up your children so well. Great job. Keep up the terrific work. We're very, very proud of you." Okay. Help join me in celebrating. We also have an award for Mina Al-Garrawee. I'm probably mispronouncing that last name. She's not here yet. Maybe if she arrives at a certain point, we could break up the monotony and actually give her an award as well. All right. Item three, Special Presentations. Julie Seidel Johnson, good evening, Julie.
Hearing Council, I'm here tonight. We'd like a chance to recognize a family that has made possible one of the goals of our Park Master Plan. As you remember, the Park Master Plan had a lot of goals about our park spaces, engaging and gathering the community, but it also had specific goals about our youth. And some of those goals are, we want every kid to be able to ride a bicycle, so we've been working with the bicycle community on that. We want outdoor recreation skills as partnered with Take a Kid Outdoors, gardening skills as with Backyard Abundance, but most importantly, swimming skills. We want to make sure that every child in Iowa City learns how to swim. It's an important safety skill. It's a lifelong recreation and fitness skill. And to that end, we have someone we'd like to honor tonight. So, I'm going to ask Matthew Eckhart, who is our Recreation Program Supervisor for Aquatics, to come up. He'll give you a little bit more information about what happened, and we'll give our little presentation.
Good evening, Matthew.
Good evening. Thank you. Thank you, Julie. Thank you, Council. I appreciate the opportunity to come up and recognize this individual that has done so much for our department already. Kind of a brief history of where we've been in the last couple of years in this process. In 2014, we had a fundraiser, our first golf outing. We kind of came up with the idea that we wanted to develop a scholarship program to reach out to individuals that may not have the financial means to participate in swim lessons. We do have a low-income program, but we still found that there was a barrier there. We wanted to eliminate that barrier as much as possible. So, we ran two outings over the next couple of years with some success. Were able to provide to a certain level, but then kind of reached a point where we wanted to reach out and do more. So, we started brainstorming with ideas of what we could do, and Gary Watts came to me, if he wants to come up, and said, "We should do a 24-hour swim." And while my mouth said, "Yes," my brain was like, "How are we going to do a 24-hour swim at one of our pools?" Because I knew he wouldn't want to do it at City Park. I'm like, "That's just not possible." But he decided he wanted to host it at his home, at his residence. And I thought, "That's great. That would be fantastic." So, this last year, May 5th and 6th of 2017, we hosted our first swim here, 24-hour swim at the Watts residence. The goal was, well, Gary came to me in March and said he wanted to do it in May, and that's an aggressive timeline, but we got it done with the help of a lot of very motivated individuals. So, the goal we set was to raise $10,000, and Gary was going to match whatever we were able to raise. So, through kind of a fee program and a donation program, we did manage to raise $9,465. And with the Watts match, that brought the total to $18,930. So, well above what we were anticipating. We found that there was a lot of support for this program. So, to date, we've issued 163 individual scholarships, and we've already started plans to do this again in 2018 over that same weekend. So, Gary, thank you for everything that you've done with us so far. We do have our certificate. I do want to make an acknowledgement of some of the other individuals that also helped us. Jerry Prothro, Jim Cantrell, Hal Eid, Tom Cassavant, and Ben Kiefer, and of course, Rose Earlbeck, who was instrumental in the process, the coordination process. So, Gary, if you'd like to share, you said you want to share a few words.
Yeah, it was a great event. We had a lot of fun, and I did not swim for 24 hours straight, just so you know.
We were wondering.
And you're all welcome to come out next year. If any of the Council would like to come out and swim, it'd be wonderful. It's on Cinco de Mayo, May 4th and 5th. So, it's a good time. I want to thank all the swimmers. I think we had around 40 swimmers, and it was a great group. They went every minute of 24 hours, and especially the overnight crew, they were amazing. We had a full moon, and it was beautiful out, but it was a little cold in the middle of the night, so... But they swam all night, so we had a ball. And it's great to see that we can get swim lessons for kids that may not be able to get those, so we're excited about what we did, and you're all welcome to come out next year. Thank you.
Thanks for your good work, Gary.
Gary, before you go, just a small certificate, thanking you for everything you've done for us, and looking forward to moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to mention, too, Gary, I remember very clearly meeting you 22 years ago in this room, and then having—well, I don't know, we both look a little bit different than we did back then, right? Thanks so much for your help on this.
My pleasure.
Yeah. Yeah, I see that. So, we're going to break up the routine here. Can you turn that back on?
Yes, of course. Come on up here. Come on up here. Come right up here and turn right around. The mirror's going to come right there. So, turn right around. There you go.
Hi, there's—come here. Just be—well, that's good. You stay right—hi, thanks for coming. I mean, I know you're going to get an award right here, and I'm going to read it in just a second. And I'm sorry you had to miss the first time when your two fellow students got an award, but thanks for hurrying to get down here. I know you accidentally went somewhere else by mistake. Okay, so, do you have a statement you want to read?
Yeah.
Okay. Here, I'll hold this, and you can talk to your audience, and maybe even your mom.
I think I would be a great leader because I'm respectful, responsible, and caring and honest. I also think I would be great at student council because I listen and always do my And I do not judge people because of how they look or what they wear. I also treat every person equally. Thanks for listening.
All right. So, let me read this award for you. It says, "Student Leadership Award. For your outstanding qualities of leadership within Ernest Horn Elementary as well as the community, and for your sense of responsibility and helpfulness to others, we recognize"—can you pronounce your name for me?
Mina Al-Garrawee.
Al-Garrawee. Thank you. "As an outstanding student leader, your community is proud of you. Presented by the Iowa City City Council, December 2017." There you go. Thank you. Thanks for getting her down here. I know you had to kind of move around to do it. Okay, good deal. All right, the next item is item number four. Consider adoption of the consent counter as presented or amended, and I'd like for the motion to involve pulling item 4D7 for separate consideration.
Second.
Moved by Mims, seconded by Bachway. Discussion? Hearing non. Roll call, please.
Bachway.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Dickens.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Taylor. Whoops. Thomas.
Yes.
Throgmorton.
Yes. Motion carries six to zero. All right, let's do item 4D7. Support of Carbon Fee and Dividend Program. This is a resolution calling on the United States Congress to pass a revenue-neutral carbon fee and dividend program.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mims, seconded by Bachway. Discussion? Is there anybody who would like to address this topic?
Want to sign in or register somewhere?
Yeah. Should be right there. Good evening, Jamie.
Hi. My name is James McCoy, and I'm a volunteer with the Iowa City Climate Advocates, and we are the local chapter of the Citizens Climate Lobby. I'm here to urge you all to vote for the carbon fee and dividend resolution that we're considering tonight. I want to thank you for approving the Carbon Reduction Goals Resolution earlier this year. Efforts at all levels are important to solving this problem, but we need a national strategy to address climate change. To be successful, any national strategy has to meet three criteria. It needs to substantially decrease carbon emissions. It needs to do so without detrimental effects on the economy, and it needs to have bipartisan appeal. The Citizens Climate Lobby studied all the known options and concluded that the carbon fee and dividend best meets these criteria. Briefly, the carbon fee and dividend is a revenue-neutral charge on carbon dioxide emissions with the return of revenue to households. A fee would be placed on fossil fuels at their entry into the economy, whether that's the oil well, or the coal mine, or the port of entry for imports, and starting at $15 per ton of CO2 emitted by that fuel and increasing by $10 per ton per year. This with time would price carbon fuels to reflect their true social costs. Revenues generated by this fee would then be returned as a monthly dividend to all U.S. residents. The two-thirds of households at the lower end of the economic ladder would break even or receive more in dividends than they pay in higher prices for increased energy costs, and that would leave extra disposable income in their pockets to stimulate the economy. The dividend part of this program would be similar to the Alaskan Permanent Fund that sends checks from all North Slope Investments to all state residents. It would inject billions of dollars into the economy. The third component of this proposal is a border adjustment on imports and exports to maintain American competitiveness. Goods going from the U.S. to countries without a similar carbon fee would receive a proportionate rebate to account for the increased energy costs of production. Goods going in—or coming into the United States that don't have a similar carbon fee would be assessed a fee on entry into the country to level the playing field, and this would prevent companies from fleeing the United States to places where they could pollute for free. The carbon fee and dividend would spur innovation, and it would build aggregate demand for low-carbon products at the consumer level. This approach has been thoroughly studied by Regional Economic Models Incorporated, which is touted as one of the best economic modeling firms in the country by the Wall Street Journal. It projects carbon fee and dividend would reduce CO2 emissions 50% below 1990 levels within 20 years. And it also projects an added 2.8 million jobs above baseline within 20 years, meeting the second criteria I talked about before. This approach has bipartisan appeal. Carbon fee and dividend is appealing to the more liberal end of the spectrum because it substantially addresses a problem that's been of grave concern to them. Conservatives have been much more reluctant to accept carbon or climate change, in part because solutions often seem to involve more government regulation and more political interference in the economy. The carbon fee and dividend approach results in minimal increase in government. It does not put money in the hands of government officials to be dispersed based on special interests, influence, or who's donated to a politician's campaign. It does not take money out of the economy as the proceeds are quickly dispersed to the people, and its rules are simple and transparent. In summary, our country needs a program to address climate change that can be adopted in the near future. It needs to effectively decrease CO2 emissions, and it needs to do so while not harming the economy, and it has to have bipartisan appeal. The carbon fee and dividend meets these criteria better than any other known option, and I strongly encourage you to support this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Good evening, Eric. Haven't seen you for a while.
I'd also like to speak in favor of the carbon fee and dividend. Just sign in here. I'd like to thank Jamie for spearheading this effort. He's the endorsements chair of our local chapter of Iowa City Climate Advocates. My name's Eric Johnson. I'm the co-chair, co-leader, co-organizer of this group. So, it's a—we're really thrilled that this is before you guys tonight, and we really hope that it passes. Congress needs to hear from us, from citizens, but they also need to hear from our—the name for you guys is a grass top instead of a grassroots. So, we—the grass-tops are especially important because you guys stick out and the politicians pay attention to you guys, so supporting this is a big deal. And I also wanted to say that this tax—it's—we call it a fee because it's not growing the size of government, but elsewhere in the world, in Canada, British Columbia, they've passed this. They call it a carbon tax there, but it's revenue-neutral, and they've done this since 2008, and it was passed by a center-right government there. And since its inception, it's reduced carbon emissions from 5% to 15%, depending on the various factors that you look at. And that was only covering 75% of the carbon emissions in British Columbia, so it's been pretty effective there. And the longer it's been in place, the more political support it's got. When they enabled it—when they first enacted it, it was slightly like 50-some percent were against it, and now it's down into the low 40s as of 2016, I think. So, yeah, I just wanted to give you an example of a real-world carbon fee and dividend situation that's working out pretty well, and encourage you guys to vote in favor of endorsing this resolution tonight. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Eric. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one else. Council, discussion?
I'd just like to thank Jamie for reaching out to all of us, and really appreciate that. You know, we, as a community, moving forward on this is really what it's all about, so I was really, really pleased that she reached out and that we're now in a position to support the program.
No, I agree with John, and I had a lot of great conversations with Jamie on the phone. And I think it's really nice to see these sort of citizen-led initiatives. You know, we don't frequently endorse sort of federal-level policy changes, but I think from time to time, it is important that we weigh in, because even in those circumstances where we don't have the literal power, we do have a platform—I guess—I didn't know I'm a grass top. I like that metaphor. That's a good one. I'm going to use that in the future. But we do have this platform, and I think from time to time in judicious way, we should express that, especially when we have such a well-thought-out platform of which to support. So, really appreciate this, and I'm happy to support it.
Karen, can you say? No. So, I've long supported carbon fee and dividend. I believe its adoption would facilitate our ability to reduce carbon emissions while also stimulating market interest in low-carbon technologies. This is basic market economics. And returning most of the income to all households would be a very fair way of taking care of equity concerns that would otherwise matter a lot. So, I clearly support this. And in fact, I've talked with Senator Grassley about it in his office. I did that like five years ago as a member of Iowa City Climate Advocates, way back when—way back then. That said, I have to admit, I'm pretty skeptical that the Congress would adopt the dividend part that's, I think, crucial to this whole thing. My guess is they'd find some other way to use the money. But that's not what we're voting on tonight. What we're voting on is the carbon fee and dividend proposal as presented by Citizens Climate Lobby, and I'm very happy to support it. So, any further discussion? All right, so, hearing no more discussion. Roll call, please.
Cole.
Yes.
Dickens.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Throgmorton.
Yes.
Bachway.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Throgmorton.
Yes.
Bachway.
Yes.
Mims.
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 Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Throgmorton.
Yes.
Bachway.
No.
Cole.
No.
Motion defeated, zero to six. Could I have a motion to accept correspondence, please?
So, moved. Second.
Moved by Dickens, seconded by Bachway. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, Mercer Aquatic Center Boiler and HVAC Replacement. Approving Plan, Specifications, Form of Agreement, and Estiment of Cost for the Construction of Mercer Aquatic Center Boiler and HVAC Replacement Project. Establishing— Establishing—
council are joining in the conversation now about the Sangsay Gilmore House. As that story is shared with the broader audience, as it will be soon, I believe that you will be hearing that the future of this house is very important to a lot of Iowa Cityans and a lot of people with connections to Iowa City who may not live here anymore, but who value its history and its roots. And it should be important to a lot of Iowa Cityans. We don't have many 170-year-old houses around. That is very old for the Midwest, unless it's like a river town like Dubuque or Burlington or Keokuk or such. Another amazing number is that in only 20 years, I had to do the math to make sure this was right, in only 20 years, we will be celebrating our bicentennial. And we want to look back on our actions today and say that Iowa Cityans did right by Theodore Sangsay and his fine brick house on Market Street. So I hope to talk to you more about it in the future, but thank you for starting to think about it seriously.
Thank you, Jenely. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one else, we'll move to item six, planning and zoning matters. Item 6A, South Gilbert Street and Macalester Boulevard, preserve at Sand Hill. This is an ordinance conditionally rezoning approximately 21.79 acres of property from interim development multifamily, ID RM zone, to low-density multifamily residential, RM 12 zone, located north and south of the intersection of South Gilbert Street and Macalester Boulevard. So, I should ask for ex parte disclosures, anybody need to report anything? I will say for the public's benefit that in our work session prior to the formal meeting, we had a consultation with the Planning and Zoning Commission, and so there was extensive discussion during the work session pertaining to this topic. Okay, with that, I'll open the public hearing. Anybody who would like to address this topic? Okay, seeing no one, I will close the public hearing.
Move first consideration.
Second.
Moved by Thomas, seconded by Mims. Discussion?
Well, I think based on our discussion at the work session tonight, it was pretty clear that there were some significant issues that P&amp;Z had and that we had. While there's an awful lot of support for this development, there's certainly some tweaking that I believe that we all felt needed to be done. From infrastructure, in terms of Macalester, in terms of a controlled intersection at Macalester and Gilbert, some of the design in terms of transition from the current housing into the new development, and just the price points and sizes, et cetera, of the structures within the area. I think those were probably the three key ones that stuck with me in terms of some issues, and I think P&amp;Z kind of agreed with that. And hopefully, the developers got enough of an idea and direction of what we're kind of looking for in terms of, you know, some changes there. And the other thing I think was really brought up was, in doing that, hopefully, maybe a little more consultation with the neighbors and getting them a little bit more on board as well. So I expect that we'll see this go down to a 0-6 vote, but not because we're not interested in support of the project, it just needs some tweaking before we can fully support it.
Anyone else?
Well put. Yeah, I just want to emphasize too, there's a lot of parts of this design that I do like. So, and I think in particular, the concepts, and I'm hoping a lot of these pieces will remain part of the final design, just not all of it. And I think Susan really said it well in terms of really reaching out with hopefully the neighbors and the developer. I know you're probably not going to get 100% agreement, but you know, there's that Rolling Stones song, "You can't always get what you want, but you gotta get what you need." So I'm hoping that both sides can, you know, the developer can get what it needs to make the project work, and the neighborhood can get what it really true needs to, and then hopefully there'll be some middle ground that you'll be able to achieve.
I'd just like to reemphasize that we had a very fruitful conversation with the Planning and Zoning Commission. I think we benefited from hearing what they had to say. I think our conversation enabled the developer to hear the kinds of changes that would be required in order to come back here and get approval, sufficient approval from the council. So we'll see what comes as things transpire over time. Now, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Dickens?
No.
Mims?
No.
Thomas?
No.
Dragan Martin?
No.
Batchway?
No.
Motion defeated, 0 to 6. Could I have a motion to accept correspondence, please?
So moved, second.
Moved by Dickens, seconded by Batchway. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, Mercer Aquatic Center Boiler and HVAC Replacement. Approving Plan, Specifications, Form of Agreement, and Estimate of Cost for the Construction of Mercer Aquatic Center Boiler and HVAC Replacement Project. Establishing Amount of Bid Security to Accompany Each Bid. Directing City Clerk to Post Notice to Bidders. And Fixing Time and Place for Receipt of Bids. I'll open the public hearing. I don't see anybody who wants to speak to this, I'll close the public hearing. Could I have a motion?
Moved to resolution.
Second.
Moved by Dickens, seconded by Batchway. Discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mims?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Dragan Martin?
Yes.
Batchway?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Dickens?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Item eight, rental permit requirements. This is an ordinance amending Title 17, entitled Building and Housing. Chapter five, entitled Housing Code, to establish a rental permit cap and to strengthen the minimum requirements for rental housing. This is second consideration?
Moved.
Moved second consideration?
Second.
Moved by Mims, seconded by Batchway. Discussion? Would anybody like to address this topic? Okay, don't see anybody. Council discussion?
I'm just happy to see us moving forward on this and know we have more to come. The staff has time to fill in the other pieces and gaps to really address the issues that were put before us when the state legislature made it impossible for us to use familial status in our rental ordinances. So stabilization, particularly for the north side. I'm glad with the changes we made in terms of the map and those boundaries, so that we can, and lowering the cap to 30%, so that we can always up it, we can always up it if we decide to. But I think this gives us a good start, and I think it's something, as we talked earlier, that we're gonna have to be reevaluating, at least on annual basis, for the next two or three years to kind of see how it's working.
I think the irony with the home role limitation, that we now don't have a tool to regulate, that these particular changes, I think in some respects, may even make the neighborhood better. So I guess I don't know if I want to thank the legislature, I'm not going that far, but I just really want to compliment the staff for having all of these tools. It's a very complicated issue, really engaging with the community, and I think we're gonna get a really great regulatory framework that hopefully we can tweak over time if need be, if it's not working quite in the way that we want it to.
Yeah, I think I want to say something about some quotations that appeared in the Daily Island today. As Ben and Gustav know, I spoke with students at UISG to the senators about affordable housing in relation to students. Was it last week, was it? Yeah. Time passes. It was a very fruitful conversation. I don't know, you have 70 senators, 60, something like that? Yeah. So they were all, almost all of them were present, we had a good extended discussion. But in the DI today, several students were quoted as being opposed to this particular ordinance, and I think they misunderstood what we're doing. My sense was that at least many of the people quoted, many of the students quoted, seemed to think that we would somehow be eliminating rental permits in the areas, in the neighborhoods that are being affected. That's not what's happening. We're putting a cap on rentals. All existing rental permits continue. I mean, nobody's gonna lose, no landlords are gonna lose rental permits in those neighborhoods, unless they violate some other part of the code. So that means all those units that are being rented right now will continue in effect. But also, this particular rental cap applies only to single-family detached housing that's used for rental purposes, or duplexes that are used for rental purposes, not apartment buildings. So it's not...
That's a significant...
Yeah, it's a significant difference. So I just want people to know that that's the case. So with that in mind, any further discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Thomas?
Yes.
Dragan Martin?
Yes.
Batchway?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Dickens?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Item nine, council appointments. This may be the fastest we've gotten to council appointments before. All right, let's see.
Five hours, can't we?
Yeah, we have several appointments to make. What am I supposed to do with this first part? Should I read all the ones that, you know, that I always have to read? You know, like Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment? Yeah, I guess I should, so all right.
You don't have to read them. I mean, it's, that's up to you.
They're publicly posted, so.
Yippee. Okay, we have one vacancy on the Board of Adjustment to fill a five-year term, and we received one application. So what do you folks want to do about that?
I would suggest we appoint Ryan Hall to the Board of Adjustment.
I'd agree.
Any further discussion about that?
I'll recuse myself.
I was gonna...
Okeydoke. All right, sounds like there's agreement, we should appoint Ryan Hall to the Board of Adjustment. With regard to Board of Appeals, we have...
Do you want to just vote on that Board of Adjustment one now, since Rappi's recusing himself, and then he can...
Yeah.
Sure. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So it's 5-0 with one recusing. Okay, Board of Appeals, we have two vacancies to fill, two five-year terms, and we received one application from Andrea French, who currently is serving her first term.
Second.
Second term, I'm sorry, that's right, second term. And we have a policy against reappointing people to more than two terms now. This is unique, though, so what do you all think?
That was my question on this one, because it is her second, and normally we wouldn't, but we have two openings, we only have one applicant. And I'm also wondering, because of the categories within here, if it's pretty tough sometimes to get applicants. I'm seeing nodding of heads VS from staff, so I would approve, I would suggest that we go ahead and appoint her to a third term.
Yeah, I think this is a special circumstance, it seems.
Yeah, I'm worried about how quickly we're able to, you know, kind of change the, I mean, throughout mine, I look at, I'm having questions as far as, what is our policy? I mean, our policy was against a second term. I'm not saying this is not an exception, but, I mean, ultimately, did we provide opportunities for previous people to say that there is exceptions as well? You know, there's gonna be a couple coming up that have been consistently in here that I think we need to have conversations about. I'm supportive as well, but I mean, it is a concern as far as how we're thinking about it, if we're truly wanting to look at how we make sure we have some fresh faces on our commissions.
I think for me, Kingsley, one of the key things is, we don't have enough applicants even to fill the openings that are there. And so it's not choosing her over any other new person. So, and we can talk about Senior Center issue in a minute when we get there. So I think if we don't even have enough applicants, and somebody wants to reapply, I don't see a problem with giving them a second, or in this case, a third term. I know with Senior Center, we decided to kind of take a break from that for an extended period of time, because the person had been on for six terms, which is really getting out there in terms of the timeframe. But I think as we go through the rest of these tonight, I think that is definitely something that we need to keep in mind. And I think we also need to be thinking, because we've talked about the fact that we really want to give different people an opportunity, I think we also need to be looking at appointing people going from one commission to the next. And so you truly aren't getting fresh faces across the commissions, you're just moving somebody from one commission to the next commission. So they end up serving 10, 20 years on commissions, just going from one to another. So I think, I think we need to look at it not only on the individual commission, but also how long and how many different boards or commissions they've been serving on as well.
Yeah, we could have that discussion at some point. I want to state for the public's benefit here, what the requirements are for this position. Actually, there are two vacancies, right?
Right.
So Kelly, Eleanor, help me if I misstate this. It's my understanding that we have a two-female requirement. Now, that doesn't mean we have to appoint a female, but it means we have to keep the position open for long enough, and then if we can't fill it with a female, then we can fill it with a male. But also, there's a, one of the appointees has to be a licensed plumber, and the other has to be an HBA rep, Home Builders Association representative, or someone qualified by experience or training. That's a pretty...
Specialized.
Yeah, a pretty specialized thing. So I think an exception is warranted in this instance. All right, any further discussion? So why don't we vote on this, do a voice vote on this as well?
You can just do this one with the rest of the group.
Yeah.
Well, let's just do it.
I would suggest maybe we do this one separately, only because we may have some disagreement on human rights, maybe we won't, but there's an awful, yeah, there's an awful lot in there.
Yeah, so appointing Andrea French. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Which brings us to the Human Rights Commission. We have, I think, 42 applicants for three positions? No, well, 41 for three. And there's a two-female requirement, and the others, it's not relevant. So what do you all think?
Well, I went through, and as I'm sure everybody else spent a lot of time, reading through these and taking a few pages of notes, and looking, you know, as we've talked about things before, not only gender, but the other diversity issues, you know, in terms of race, ethnicity, gender identity, et cetera, and all those. But having looked at all those, I think we still have to come back to who do we, you know, with taking those into consideration, we still have to look at qualifications. I want to make sure we have really good, qualified people on here. I came up with Ingrid Anderson. She's an attorney by training, she works in environmental compliance. I felt like she had a strong experience and activity within social justice, civil rights. She'd been on the Cedar Rapids Civil Rights Commission. So she was the first one I had. I'll just give you all three, and then we can go from there. I had Ariana Aron, A-R-O-N. She's an advocate for homeless youth. She's worked in a number of the local nonprofits, young African-American woman. Thought her work experience and activity within the community lent a lot of, was a strong point to her application. And then my third one, once I had those two, again, gender was no issue in going to the third one. And my third one, I went with Jonathan Munoz. He is actually a practicing attorney. He did a lot of legal aid work, and I think does a lot, I don't have those notes right in front of me, but does, I think, a lot still within kind of the civil rights and those kinds of areas. So a lot of very good applicants. We saw a lot of students, I think based on a presentation that Stephanie Bowers had done to a class at the university. And I want to applaud those students for, you know, getting out and applying. They're up against, I think, a very, very strong group of applicants with a lot of experience, and a lot of, a number of them with, I think, some very relevant experience for this commission, so.
So, go ahead. So I would agree. I had Jonathan Munoz, that was mine as well. I also, I think you may have mentioned age as well, so I was thinking about commission age, and I believe he's 27, and I believe Ariana Aron as well is, I can't remember, I don't have her.
25.
25, okay, I didn't have it on my notes.
You support her also?
Support her also, yeah. The only thing I think we're in disagreement on is, I chose Demita Brown. I've met Demita Brown a couple of times now in various instances. She's, I guess I don't know exactly which way I want to describe her, I mean, she does a lot of work. She started with doing some work in the community, she has a lot of experience in teaching. And one of the things I also thought about when focusing on the Human Rights Commission is the thought around how our commissioners lead or guide the conversation as they move forward. And as you see commissioners come on, certain things happen, and change, and different, and so, you know, she has a focus on really empowerment of communities of color. She has a wonderful tendency of calling out instances of social injustice, even somewhat awkwardly, in situations where I may not have wanted to step there, and she decided to step there, and really being proud of her for that. And so I'm supportive of her. She's mentioned to me discussions about freedom schools, and wanting to incorporate more of a discussion around empowerment, especially when it focuses on the African-American community. And she's done some wonderful work with Midwest Telegraph, and so that's the only reason, the only difference.
Okay, how about the rest of you?
I have Giovanna Davidovic, who has lived in Iowa City, I think, for...
Four and a half.
Four and a half years. One thought with Giovanna was, she's, has an international perspective on human rights, which I thought would be an interesting contribution to the commission's...
She's from Serbia, right?
Serbia, yeah, she's a Serbian. The second person I had in mind was Kathy McGinnis, who also seemed to have a pretty strong background in, you know, working kind of on the front lines with respect to people who were, you know, where human rights often become, come into play. And I had several others, Solomon World's, Peter Gurlik, and David Berger-German as a possible third candidate.
But you're not gonna name just three?
I was worn out at that point. I didn't have a strong feeling about those three. I guess if I were to lean toward anyone, it might be Solomon World's.
Who were those other two, though?
Yeah, who were they?
David Berger-German and Peter Gurlik.
Okay, Terry, Rockne?
I had McGinnis, Ariana, and Munoz. Those three.
Okay.
To jump to the quick here, Rockne, I don't know what you're gonna do, but I definitely had Munoz.
Yeah, I was gonna say I have Munoz.
So, okay, so Munoz is gonna be one appointee.
Right.
Who's your year again, yours again, Terry, I'm sorry?
Yeah, I missed the first one.
McGinnis, and then Ariana.
I was gonna do Ariana, too.
You had Ariana, too? Okay.
I'm sorry, oh yeah, you mean Aron, or however I pronounce her last name. So, Rockne, would you please state your three, or whatever?
So that would be, so I did Jonathan, Ariana, and I am gonna support Demita as well. I share Kingsley's view on her, I think she's done a lot of terrific work, and I think she's gonna really do excellent work on the commission if she's selected. Solomon, I'm the biggest Solomon World fan, I think he's a great guy. He's only gonna be here for like five months, I had a concern about that. But if he were here for like, just a little bit longer, I would totally support him. So if you're listing Solomon, that's the issue. But yeah, those three, Demita Brown, Ariana, and Jonathan.
Okay, I think I heard four in favor of Aron already, right?
Yes, right.
Okay, so there's another appointee, so Munoz and Aron, for sure. And I can say that I had, like John, I had like six female names, or seven actually, identified, Ingrid Anderson, Demita Brown, Julie Christensen, Giovanna Davidovic, Vanessa Fiks-Morais.
Vanessa's already on another.
Oh, she is, on, delete her.
I saw that twice.
Sorry. Vanessa, you're deleted. Kathy McGinnis, Emily Ranz. So I, I think all of them would be appropriate, but we're left with, well, McGinnis had two votes.
Three of you include yours.
Yeah, I could, I certainly could support McGinnis.
Brown has two.
Brown had two, I could support Brown, too, so, but I don't have that many votes.
I think you should change your vote to Demita.
Yeah, that's what I think.
If you get a chance to meet her...
Well, I have met her, I've talked with her at length several times, and she writes public opinion pieces for the Press Citizen all the time. Yeah, I can support Demita. But we already have two appointees, and we can only need, we only need one more. So Brown, Davidich, well, Brown and McGinnis are the ones that have the highest number of votes so far, but...
Brown needs one more.
Just out of curiosity, with the returning members, I don't know race or ethnicity, I mean, I know Adele Adams, know Joe Coulter, I don't know the other three. Do we have any African-Americans that are already on and are staying on?
I think we can probably figure that out.
Let's go Falk and Pena.
Yeah, let me find that.
To that end, I think this highlights one of my points I made during the work session as far as having that information available.
Well, yeah, we don't have that information available. We do have the names of the current members and so on.
I'm thinking that there's not.
I don't think there is. Coulter, Adams, who else? Yeah, there's no African-American representative. Not that we're formally appointing an African-American representative.
No, but just as we're trying to look at that diversity of...
Yeah, I mean, with the Human Rights Commission, it is more complicated now. We need to have a more diverse range of appointees. Yeah, I would support Brown.
I think to Kingsley's point, if we're going to look at not only qualifications, you know, and we get people who are all highly qualified, and so then we are looking at diversity issues, this is probably a pain in the neck for the city clerk. But it would be nice to go back and pull from their applications and have some of that information related to diversity as we're trying to select new people to these commissions and boards.
I wonder if there are any legal constraints we should be conscious of?
No, I think you can have that information.
Yeah, because I think disability status.
If it's available. If they filled it out. They provide it voluntarily, so we're not going to designate.
For this commission, it would be helpful for sure.
And some of them, I mean, some of the other applicants did. I mean, there was maybe two or three members I remember, I mean, mentioned some type of disability, you know, that I took into account.
Oh, no, the questions are asked.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Two or three who mentioned that.
Whether they... Yeah, because the other one I don't know is, you know, age, variety of ages on commission either. Because with Jonathan, I mean, if we went with Jonathan, Ariana, and Ingrid, you're getting three younger people.
Right.
Demita is in her mid, early 50s. My guess, I don't even know. I mean, of the five returning other than Adele and Joe Coulter, I'm not, I don't recall the other three from having appointed them in terms of...
Their age and...
Their ages, and I don't go to the meetings, so I...
I don't know that either.
I know we're losing, some of the people we're losing are between 50 and 70, just knowing several personally.
Yeah, right.
So we are losing some age there.
Yeah. All right. Well, who else has been keeping track of possible appointees here? Because I don't really know how many said Brown and how many said McGinnis now.
There's two for Brown.
There's three for Brown.
Three for Brown. Terry is Brown.
I can say Brown. Who else said Brown?
That would be three.
Who else did?
Yeah. Who else did?
I've said Brown.
Those three.
All right, so three. And who said McGinnis?
I did.
I did.
I think I did, too.
Susan's thinking about Brown. I can tell the wheels are turning.
Kingsley, you just lost. I'll go with McGinnis.
All right. So that we will be appointing...
And what was McGinnis's piece again? Just so I...
She's a probation officer.
Lived here 23 years.
So worked in the system, seeing people on the front line of some of that.
Okay. All right, so the motion should be to appoint Aron Munoz and McGinnis.
Right.
So moved.
Moved by MEMS, seconded by Dickens.
Is it all in favor?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, six to zero. Parks and Recreation Commission, we have two vacancies to fill for your terms, but the suggestion coming from Kelly is that we defer to our next meeting and appoint all three vacancies at the same time because there's another vacancy that takes effect at a certain moment where we can appoint three people instead of just two and then do it again sort of next time. So we will revisit that at our next meeting.
Defer.
Yeah, so we need a motion to defer the Parks and Recreation Commission appointees to our December 19th meeting.
So moved, second.
Moved by Dickens, seconded by Thomas. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I have a quick question related to that, and I could probably get to it. Is there time for anybody else to apply?
That other vacancy, the deadline is the Tuesday before the next meeting.
Okay. So I would just encourage if there's anybody out there who is interested in serving on the Parks and Rec Commission to get their application in. We have three very good applicants. We do have one that is finishing his second term, who I know would love to stay on. He's done an excellent job. But we have stated very publicly that our goal is to try and get new people and different people represented on these boards and commissions. So just kind of put that out there.
Yeah. Okay, we can move on to the Public Art Advisory Committee. We have two vacancies to fill, two, three-year terms. And we received four applications and we need to appoint one male or, you know, in general, appoint one male and one nun, or no preference. I know, it always sounds weird, doesn't it?
Sounds like we're getting a nun. Well, and it looks to me, if I'm reading this right, that we can only appoint one tonight. So, and we can only appoint one who's a public art professional.
There is one at large.
Right, right. So we can only appoint one out of the public art professionals, or we could appoint the at-large. We can't do both because we don't have a male in either category.
That sounds right, but we could at our next meeting.
Correct.
Yeah.
Of the public art professionals, Vera Rose Smith kind of, I thought they were all incredibly highly qualified.
Very impressed with them.
But I liked her specialization of, you know, the production of public art, I thought was a very positive attribute that I was looking at.
I was very impressed with all four of them and find it impossible really to choose. And so I can support Vera Rose Smith.
Same.
Same.
All right, there are four votes. So could I have a motion to appoint Vera Rose Smith to the Public Arts Committee?
So moved.
Moved by Dickens, seconded by MEMS. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, we have Senior Senator Commission, two vacancies to fill, two, three-year terms. And we received two applications. We're supposed to appoint one male and one, it doesn't, gender doesn't matter.
I am going to suggest that we appoint both of these individuals. We've had this discussion about Jay Hanahan for months, who has served six terms. But over all these months, we have not gotten enough applicants to actually fill all the positions on the Senior Senator Commission. So to me, if after all these months, he continues to have his name in here and we still have an opening and we're still going to have the commission in place, then I don't see why at this point we don't appoint him.
He's been off for a full year and he does have a passion for the senior center, so.
So could I ask a clarifying question here? I mean, that sounds reasonable to me, but when people apply, do their names remain in the hopper, so to speak, for a year? So do we know that Jay really wants to be reapplying at this moment?
He can always decline if we appoint him.
Yeah, fair enough.
If he really doesn't want.
Sure, he's one that if he reapplied or if he just left his name in the...
Well, if Jay turns this down, that'd be fair. Okay, so could I have a motion to appoint Cheryl Claman and Jay Hanahan?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dickens, seconded by MEMS. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 10, announcement of vacancies. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. A previous announcement concerned the Parks and Recreation Commission. We have one vacancy to fill a four-year term. Applications for this position must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, December 12, 2017. We have two new announcements. One concerns the Community Police Review Board. We have one vacancy to fill an unexpired term on it. And the Airport Zoning Commission, one vacancy to fill a five-year term on it. Applications for these positions must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, January 9, 2018. Item 11, Community Comments. So Ben, would you like to say a few words?
I'd also like to echo Rockne's point. I'm a big fan of Solomon, Solomon World's. He's great. I will be sad when he goes to Michigan, but he'll be doing bigger and better things. Don't have a whole lot today. It's finals or getting ready for finals week, so I'll be going to the library after this. I also probably won't be here at the next city council meeting, so I'd just like to take this time to publicly thank Terry Dickens for his service to Iowa City. You've been a really, a pleasure to work with. You've been, I remember when I first came to one of my city council meetings, I whispered over to Jake, I was like, that guy looks vaguely like, what's his name? Bill Murray. That's a compliment. And then, you know, just getting to work with you, it's just been, it's just been really, really fun. I think you're an excellent example of, you know, how to take your work seriously, but not how to take yourself too seriously. That's something that I certainly look up to because a lot of times we get caught up in, you know, the weed, so to speak. So thank you very much for your service.
Thank you. So Terry, did you see Bill Murray on the David Letterman Award thing?
Luckily, no.
It was pretty funny. So you could come in with that Henry VIII gear on.
I was thinking more of a dinosaur head.
Thanks, Ben. All right, we are now at item 12, City Council Information. Maybe we can start with Susan and then move to the right.
Oh, gosh, you didn't give me enough time, Jim.
No.
Met last week with Colleen Schmidt, I think is the last name down at Kirkwood Community College. She had approached us, well, she had talked at one of the council forums when we were running for city council this fall, about the lack of English language classes in the community. So just started with having a conversation with her. These are free classes that they run at the Kirkwood Learning Center, and they always have an incredibly long list of people. So just talking about starting to gather some information and other community partners that are doing some similar things and looking at how we might develop some partnerships where the city may or may not be involved, but just trying to get, gather information really at this point, how we can kind of address that issue.
So I can't remember how long it's going to be happening, but right now, the downtown pop-up shop is running and it's been fun. I've been able to frequent it a couple of times and just see the different businesses. And actually, I didn't know it was rotating, so that was, I was planning on going there to get something and instead I saw the business wasn't there. But I think it's a fun idea in that space. You know, I love that space being utilized in kind of, you know, new and inviting ways. That's it. Oh, and then snow removal. So I got my letter or note from the city in a blue paper, which like made me think that that was, I think it was in blue paper. But anyways, pay attention to, you know, your cars and where they're parked. My son's really excited about snow and I'm not, so just beware and be ready.
Well, I guess I'm going to shift gears a little bit, talk about something a little bit more serious. Since my time on council, I have gotten more calls in the last month about rising crime issues than I have throughout any of my time period, and it really concerns me. I know that we have a fabulous police department. I think our police department does a wonderful job. I know we have a lot of great community leaders that are actively working with all components of this issue. But I do, I was aware of this because citizens reached out to us, and I'm sure they all reached out to you as well. And I really want to encourage the community to continue to reach out to us. We can monitor this because I can think of no higher duty that we all have than to ensure community safety and to make sure that we're as proactive as we possibly can. So I'm hoping with some of our listing posts, we continue to return to our southeast side so we're proactive with the residents out there and that we continue to think about this, whether it's a work session, whether it's additional programming, whether it's additional resources, because that's such a wonderful part of our community. But yet we've, you know, we've had some people reach out recently that I hadn't had that in at least my own limited term on council. So I think it's just something we need to monitor closely. And we also need to make sure that, and continue to encourage the residents to reach out to us because we can only effectively serve them if they reach out to us. So it's something for us, I think, to really watch closely as a council.
Jeff, on that point, I wonder if we could have Chief Matherley come in and give us a quick briefing at our next meeting concerning what the situation is, whether it's worsened, whether it's kind of the same, but more visible somehow. You know, let us know what he knows.
Sure.
John?
Had a very interesting and entertaining, for lack of a better word, visit to Iowa City's Prairie Hill Cohousing Project.
It has really moved along.
It's moving along. It's, you know, it's becoming real. And when, you know, Rockne, you mentioned this notion of community, it is so central to what it is we're trying to do and promote. And I think the cohousing is an interesting concept along those lines. It's a mix of housing types at different price points. It's something, you know, novel in that regard. And it also has what, its distinguishing quality is a common house. So it has a center in that way that I was describing before, but in this case, it's a building, not a park, not a commons in that regard. The common house is not completed, but it's framed up. The roof is on and you can walk through it and get a sense of it. It will have a dining room that will be able to accommodate everyone who lives there and there are 36 units, so it's a fairly sizable number. It's, I'd encourage anyone interested to look at their webpage. They include the plans. They include profiles of the individuals. It's pretty, you know, they, I think they have maybe half of the units already accounted for. It's a pretty interesting mix of people who are chosen to live there. There's a certain intentionality to living in a cohousing community, not that you're in a commune. It's, it's not that, but it's sort of people who learned their lessons from the 60s, you know. Some separation is a good thing. But I think architecturally and in terms of what it's, you know, what it presents as a way of forming community, it's a very interesting example. It's the first one in Iowa, the state of Iowa.
All right, well, that comes to me. So on my birthday, I had an excellent meeting with student government and all the senators and Ben and Gustav. That was my birthday.
I want to set up like a happy birthday.
Too late. But it was fun. I think I found it very enlightening, so I hope it was helpful for student government. And on the 30th, I helped celebrate the grand opening of the new Hilton Garden Inn. That was fun to do. A lot of happy people there. I think the team in particular was very pleased to be able to celebrate. On the 1st, I participated in a panel discussion that some of you also attended at Film Scene involving three other mayors. Cedar Rapids Mayor Ron Corbett, Waterloo Mayor Quentin Hart, and Madison, Wisconsin Mayor Paul Soglan. And it was enlightening for me to participate in that. I was glad to do it. Last, Susan and I are going to be meeting with Janet Godwin and Lori Retlin tomorrow as we did before with Chris Lynch and Brian Kerschling, you know, quarterly kind of thing, meeting with them. So I look forward to that. That's it for me. Jeff?
Yeah, I do have one item. In your late handouts, the electronic late handouts that were distributed to you, there was a item regarding the Telecommunications Commission, and they requested that the council take a similar action to what they did, which is to oppose the rollback on the net neutrality regulations that were passed during the Obama administration. So I, you know, my viewpoint is the Telecommunications Commission's position on that is consistent with that of cities across the country. It's consistent with the National League of Cities' position, and I certainly don't see any harm in joining the Telecommunications Commission in support of their position. So with your head nods, we can communicate that to our delegation as well.
It's fine with me. Ashley, nothing?
I was just going to mention that we have a new listserv for e-subscriptions related to the budget and activities that occur financially. So anyone who's interested, we sent out a press release in conjunction with us getting the Government Finance Award for our budget this past year and... And so anybody can access the listservs by going to the News and Media tab on our website, on the city website, to sign up for the budget news and information that, where people can participate further.
Good. Eleanor, Kelly. All right, I guess we're done. Could I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Dickens, seconded by Boschway. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Bill?